It's, it's, instead of one long document, you can go straight to the document.
City clerk question.
How do I get this on HTML?
Where you sign in?
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as mayor, I hereby call to order meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for March 12, 2018 at this hour. As always, we will begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Councilor Mark Haynes in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Councilor Cheney?
Here.
Councilor Bowns?
Here.
Councilor Whitman?
Present.
Councilor Haynes?
Here.
Councilor Hamel?
Present.
Councilor Bolduc?
Councilor Bolduc is ill and will not be with us this evening.
Mayor Inglis.
Mayor Inglis is present, thank you. And I'd also say that we remotely welcome Councilor Bolduc to the meeting as he's watching us at home on television, so everybody be on their best behavior.
That's for sure.
We're glad to have you turning in, tuning in, Armin.
I'll get a report in a couple of days, I'm sure.
Yeah, probably, we'll probably each get a grade.
And speak into your microphone.
For the record, also note, oh, first of all, I should say that the roll call revealed that five of six councilors are present tonight, and that establishes a quorum for this meeting. Also joining us at the head table tonight is City Manager Scott Myers. Before we get into the agenda, I will note for the benefit of the council that one item under Old Business is, did not make it onto the agenda, and under Unfinished Business, item number 21, and that will be discussion of the Laconia, of the Union Avenue at Elm Street traffic count that we tabled at our last meeting, so we'll bring that off the table at the appropriate time under Unfinished Business to talk about that. I think Mr. Anderson is here to brief us on that as well, is that correct? Okay, we have no proclamations to give tonight. First item of regular business is minutes. We're talking about the minutes to our February 26 meeting. Those minutes were distributed to the council on March 3. No changes were reported to the clerk, and so in lieu of any changes at this hour, giving council one more chance to speak up, I'm going to declare the minutes to our meeting of February 26th as accepted as presented by the clerk. We have no consent and action items tonight, so we are to citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate time on the agenda for anyone in the audience to address the council if they wish on a matter that is not covered on tonight's agenda, not on tonight's agenda. Does that take anybody into account? No? Okay, interviews, we have, we had three interviews scheduled tonight. One of those has been postponed. Dennis Peterson asked to have consideration of his nomination put off for a month, and so he will not be with us tonight. So we have two interviews scheduled. The first one is William Bill Stewart. Mr. Stewart is seeking an appointment to a regular member position on the Planning Board for a three-year term to expire in June of 2021. So, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if you would share with us, the council likes to know what ward people live in, so if you could share with us.
I live in Ward 1.
Ward 1, all right. And if you could tell us briefly, if you would, why you would like to serve on the Planning Board?
I've worked in and out of municipal government and government itself, municipal government for about 12 years, and then around state and federal government for around 25 years, directly with government and as a contractor. I've been involved with the planning process. I've sat as an ex officio, non-voting member of several boards in the past, including a zoning appeals board, building appeals board, several appeals boards of that nature. Appeared as an expert witness in a larger city, literally hundreds of times in administrative hearings before Housing Appeals Board, a Board of Zoning Appeals, and a Planning Commission. And I've been in the Lakes Region for about seven years now. Thought it was my civic duty to step up. I'd seen some vacancies become apparent, some recusals come up here recently, and thought it was my civic duty to step up and do my part and help out the city with its growth.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Stewart? You have his application in front of you there.
How are you tonight?
Great, how are you?
For stepping forward. Any observations from your time that you would bring to bear to help strengthen our planning process here in Laconia based on your experience elsewhere?
Streamlining would be very important. Trying to stick to, there is statutory criteria for, for the board, not reaching out beyond that. Butters here have, have more voice than they do in other places, so butters are very important in, in this region. And there's, there's, there's lots of things that could use improvement. I think Laconia does a stand-up job, from what I've seen over the years. I've been here seven years now. So I can't see improving it greatly, but there's always improvements to be made.
Councilor Hamel?
I also want to thank you for coming forward and looking to serve on the board and give up your time. The other boards that you were on, did you ever do anything with master plans or?
Master plans, I wasn't involved with the process of revising a master plan in Colorado that went through. I did sit on a panel, which, we had dozens of people on this panel, to rewrite the zoning ordinance in the city of Dayton to conform with the master plan. So I am familiar with comprehensive plans, master plans, as they're called across the United States.
Good, because we're, we're going through that now. Have you been to any of the Planning Board meetings at all?
I have not, no.
Have you, you've been here that says seven years, you've never been to a meeting or?
Not, not, not a planning meeting, no.
Okay. And I noticed on here you said that you think Charlie St. Clair is leaving, is that?
Well, I thought he was, but I've seen recently that he's not. But I, I assumed he would because of responsibilities with his office now, but I, I suppose he's not. And that's okay with me, too.
I was gonna say, you know something we don't know.
I don't, I haven't heard anything through the grapevine, don't worry about things.
Is there, how many, is there, it doesn't say, is there more than one opening for regular or?
We have two positions vacant on the board itself, one because of a passing, and the other one, I don't know why we have the other one.
I think it was a resignation.
So we had one gentleman die and one resign. And we also have vacant alternate positions as well.
So there is two vacant regular positions that aren't contested?
In fact, I think with, with Mr. Lamonti's resignation, we don't even have any alternates on the Planning Board now.
Correct, so in your staff report for the, the two applicants tonight, it does say, under the discussion, there are two vacant regular members and three vacant alternate positions.
Really happy to have you come forward.
I'll just remark that in January, February, and now in March and April, it's been hard to get a quorum together for the Planning Board.
Well, if you'd stop moving around, it'd be a lot easier.
Have you, have you read the, the first two chapters that we just posted from the, from the Planning Department, the first two chapters of our rewrite of the master plan?
No, I haven't. I, I'm familiar with the rest of your codes, but I have not read the most recent ones, no. I will familiar myself.
Councilor Bowns, so you'll know, is the council's representative on the Planning Board. Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Stewart?
Yes, thank you for coming forward.
All right, I will say to both you and Mr. Nivis, who is up in a second here, that by the normal council rules and procedures, we do interviews on the first meeting of the month, and we, we vote on nominations at the second meeting of the month. So we'll not be voting, we'll not be taking this matter up tonight. We thank you both for coming. You are more than welcome to, to come next time as well, but it's not a requirement. We generally don't call on the applicants at the second meeting, but you're welcome to attend if you like. But we won't be taking this up any more business in this, relative to this tonight.
Great, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Mr. Nivis. John Nivis is seeking appointment to a regular reappointment, to a regular member position on the trustees of the trust fund for a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2021. Welcome, Mr. Nivis.
Welcome.
Good to see you again. You live in Ward?
Ward 1.
Ward 1.
Yep.
All right, can you tell us why you'd like another three-year term on the?
On the trustee of trust funds.
For punishment, is that?
Yes, exactly right, no, it's actually, it's, it fits very well with my previous experience and my previous employment. Worked 35 years for various banks in investment and trust service, and then I've been a trustee of trust funds for 10 years. And I just want to continue. We've, have gotten to the point where it's pretty well managed. We have another trustee, we still need a third trustee. If there's anybody out there watching that would like to, please contact the City Manager's Assistant, Nancy Brown, to get an application, because we would like a third member. Because there are three, and we have two now, so if I'm reappointed, there'll be two, so. But again, it's, it's something that I think I can contribute to the city because of my experience and having been a trustee, so that's why I'm seeking reappointment.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Nivis? Councilor Hamel?
I want to thank you for doing it again and coming forward. During your meetings, and it's, it's a local bank that obviously manages that?
It's Citizens Bank out of Manchester.
Oh, okay. Do you have the ability to make suggestions on, I don't know, particular stocks or investments to this bank and may, if they agree or not, or whatever? I mean, do you have that ability?
We have that ability. We tend not to. My philosophy is you've hired these people for their expertise in managing the individual investments in the portfolio. And what we do express opinions to them is primarily more so as to asset classes rather than, or asset ratios rather than specific stocks. You know, I don't have the ability to do that research anymore, you know, so.
Do, do you know what their finance charge is for managing our portfolio, for the percentages?
It is a, I think, 50 basis points. It's about half of what every other institution. We just recently went through a process of selecting a manager, and we re-selected citizens. And the primary factor for that was this heavy discount they had on their fee. We're getting about, at 50, about 50, 50% discount off of the standard fee.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you set, I'm sorry, go ahead. Councilor Whitman. What's the overall asset allocation, bonds, stocks?
We're now working down to about 50%, 50/50. We had been, as the market was going up, we were up as high as 75%. And we, over the last four or five years, we've generally worked that back down to 50/50.
You set a target rate of return?
No, we don't set, in our investment policy, we have a statement that we would like to receive, have a yield of 3%, but that's not a requirement. That, that's our objective.
3%?
Yeah.
So it's a pretty conservative portfolio then, 3% probably, huh?
Well, that's just the income yield, that's not total return.
What about total return? Okay.
We don't have a target of total return, although they have consistently outperformed the averages. You know, that's one of the things we get on our quarterly meetings, is the investment performance, and they.
So if the average is six, you're doing better than six, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and those reports are available. City Councilever wants to look at them, we're happy there is a copy in the City Manager's office.
Okay, now probably that's where we should go, but I'm just curious, do you know what the, the total investment of the city is? What the total trust fund is?
It is now, I mean, it's probably about $3.5 million.
$3.5?
Yeah, yeah.
On its south, the California Public Pension Fund, huh, $3 million? Multiply that times god knows what.
Oh, for California, yeah, oh, yeah.
And they're going broke.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, you're more than welcome.
Appreciate it very much, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right, nominations, appointments, and elections, we have none tonight. We'll take that up at our next meeting. Communications, I'm not aware of. No public hearings tonight for a change. No presentations tonight, I don't think, right? What are we gonna do with ourselves? Mayor's Report?
Go home early.
I don't really have anything under Mayor's Report tonight other than to remind people if they have not heard already that because of the pending storm, trash pickup has been delayed for a day. So that trash can sitting out in front of my house is to, for no particular purpose at this point, and instead of coming by on Tuesday, they'll come by on Wednesday in my particular case. But, so trash pickup has been delayed for one day. Committee reports. I have a little brief piece of business there. We have a, we have a, a matter that's going to be, are you gonna propose this tonight, or is the next?
I think we can do it in conjunction with what you're saying right now, we can look to schedule a meeting, yes.
Okay, so the, the question is, Public Works is the topic, and that committee is chaired by Councilor Bolduc. And so I'm going, so there's a, there's a pending piece of business that the City Manager is going to introduce in a minute that needs to be heard by that committee, and we need to schedule a meeting of that committee, take that up. So I'm going to ask, in lieu of the temporary absence of Councilor Bolduc, I'm going to ask Councilor Cheney if you would sit in on that meeting. Certainly appreciate it. As a fill-in member for now, for Council, I'm gonna ask you, Councilor Bowns, to chair that meeting if you would, please.
Sure.
And you are also, Councilor Haynes is also on that committee. So temporarily, that committee will be chaired by Councilor Bowns with Councilors Cheney and Haynes as the second and third member. So what do we need to put on the agenda?
Well, we've, we've got the private roads, that's gonna be ongoing for a while, that we probably will continue with the Public Works Committee at some point, but the two more pressing items, one is dealing with some retaining walls. We're looking to set a city policy on retaining walls. With some of these older walls, there's a question about whose property they're on, city right-of-way, private property, combination, who's gonna maintain them, reconstruct, those types of things. So as we're getting into the season, we've got a couple of those issues. We wanted to have that conversation and get a policy position on the City Council on how we move forward with some of these gray area retaining walls. The second one deals with driveway cuts and extra width, and we're, we're running into this on a lot of the larger homes, particularly in the downtown area and up on the Union Ave towards the hospital, where some of what were single-family homes or duplexes back in the days are now being broken into three or four units or greater ones. And parking is becoming a premium, and we're losing, you know, pervious surface, and driveways are becoming bigger as cars are trying to get off the road. So we're looking to put together, we're, we're not trying to go back and anybody who's got an existing cut or cuts in at a certain width would be grandfathered, but we're looking to set a policy going forward that relates to the width of the cut can be not how much, not the depth that it can go into a property, again, just to deal with some aesthetics and neighborhood character, and also for, you know, some of the runner, water runoff and drainage issues and those types of things, so.
All right, so a motion being ordered to schedule two new items of business under 16E. So 16E2 would be retaining wall policy, and 16E3 would be driveway cut policy.
Right, and both of those we would like to take up at a committee meeting.
So let's, let's add those to the agenda first. Could I have that motion, please? Councilor Hamel, seconded by Councilor Haynes, thank you. Any discussion about adding those two items to the agenda for Public Works Committee? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you, if five votes in front of that motion carries. All right, now, Councilor Bowns, I will turn it over to you to schedule a meeting.
How long do you think this will take?
I would think for this first one to go through the issues and have some dialogue, I would think we would want to have an hour. It may not take the full hour, but I would like to have that for.
So why don't we schedule this for the next regular meeting at 6:00?
6:00, all right, so that'd be March 26?
Yeah.
All right, Councilor Bowns moves to schedule a meeting in the Public Works Committee for 6:00 PM on March 26. Is there a second, please? Councilor Whitman seconds that motion, any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries, thank you. So that's 3:26 at 6:00 PM. All right, any other committee business tonight? No? All right, how about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight?
I think I brought you up.
Don't update us on the master plan?
We scheduled it for a public hearing for the first Tuesday in April.
Another public hearing?
We had the public hearing, we scheduled for, for, to take a vote on it. We didn't vote on it at, during the public hearing. We had the public hearing, one person spoke.
Yes.
At that public hearing.
So you're gonna have a second public hearing?
No.
Oh.
We're not gonna have a second, but we just scheduled it for a vote.
I watched the tape of the meeting, there was, it sounded like there were some procedural, not procedural, but housekeeping.
There was, then we had to do some minor changes to the actual.
So you expect to take a vote at the April meeting then? Assuming a quorum can be gathered?
Yeah, that's the plan, but right now, it doesn't look like there's gonna be a quorum at the April meeting. We're trying to schedule a meeting for another Tuesday in April, and we're looking for a quorum, so Mr. Stewart might have.
I was just gonna say that.
All right, any other liaison reports? Okay, next, we're gonna turn to the man with the tan. Returning from a well-deserved week off is our City Manager, Scott Myers. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to be back and joining you all in the weather we're gonna have tomorrow.
Yeah, sure.
So you've got included in your first meeting in the month Agenda Packet, our financial and operational trends. So at the top of page one or page 24, however you want to refer to it, is the building permit. Again, the assessing year runs April 1st to March 31st, so we're one month to go in March for additional building permits. We currently stand at 18.3 million. Back in the fall, where we were trending, I thought we would end up for the, the assessing year at 20 million. We need a little bit of a boost, but again, people could be pulling building permits in March for late March or early April getting in the ground, so I don't think that's out of the, out of the question. Last year ago, a year ago at this time, we had 16.4 million, so we're running just about $2 million ahead, but nowhere near where we were two years ago, where we had a, a good spurt in building growth at a little over 30 million. If you turn to the second page of the report, you'll see that we can, I'm sorry, in the first page, we continue to be busy on the fire and rescue calls, although not as busy in January, where we had some significant storms, some power outage issues going on, and those types of events going on. So even though we had a lot more snow in February, it wasn't as many calls with fire, they were still busy. Police department on page two, page 25 also continues to be a very busy department as well. I'll draw your attention to the property tax collection. We're just short of 98%, so we're in a healthy position on where we at with collection, and you can see that's running higher than any of the prior six years that are listed there. Our motor vehicle registrations continue to be coming in strong. We're running just short of 71% of our target. We are two-thirds of the way through the year, through the fiscal year, so we should be running around 67%. So we're running about four percentage points ahead there on those projections. You can see the various overtime tallies for the month and year-to-date on page 26 of your Agenda Packet. Not a whole lot going on with the use of parks and recreation facilities in, in the winter months. We had six each for January and February. The impact fees are slowly but steadily showing some growth, so we've got a total of about $110,000 currently on, across the various departments of school, police, fire, parks, roads, and library and available impact fees for use. On page 28 of the report is dealing with our winter storm costs. So you can see the February, the number of storms that we were out, a number of them plowing, some just for some small flurries and, and light snow and freezing activity where it was just more of a salting or sanding event. But February was a relatively expensive month as far as storms go, and this does not include the storm that we had last week, that fell in March. And also, as was mentioned, we're looking for some weather again tomorrow. The bottom of page 28, you can see that we've come close to expending our winter maintenance budget, which is dealing with the purchase of salt and sand and, and plow replacement materials and those types of things. We did have a decent expenditure this month at 141,000, so I'm assuming we've got some salt and sand sitting in the shed, so it's not a need for an immediate purchase at this point, depending on how the rest of the winter season plays out. You will see that we're pretty close to, you know, we used about 80% of our outside contractors line item, which deals with some of the parking lots in the city. And then our winter maintenance overtime, which is part of the overall public works overtime budget. Within that overtime number, we, we allocate 50,000 as to what we target for overtime for the winter maintenance. We've overspent that target at this point. I'd have to look to see if we have overspent the entire overtime allocation for year-to-date, but we do have some overtime in there for the other months of the year for things other than winter maintenance as well. But certainly, a lot of these storms have happened on the weekend, and in some cases, long storms on the weekend that have accounted for some double time beyond the time and a half. But I can't say enough about the work that, that Wes Anderson, our director, and his crew have done this year. They've been responsive. If you've traveled around and crossed some bordering communities during storms, our, our roads are looking, looking better than others in, in the neighborhoods, so certainly we appreciate that. And the challenge this time of year, as I'm sure you're all aware, is the potholes, and we are just waiting for the weather to finally break and the asphalt plants to open. And in the case of a good portion of Court Street, we're waiting for the construction season to begin so we can get going on that project, so. But Wes and his team have really stepped up, and I know there's some fatigue there with the number of storms, but they do a great job. I've got a few other items to bring up to you beyond the report, but maybe I'll stop there to see if there's any questions on that before I continue.
Questions so far, Councilor Hamel?
I do. Scott, under the grievance page, I notice there's another one there from the fire department. Could you explain what that is?
We had an issue with our payroll. I'll say it's the direct deposit slip, so the, the transmittal of our payroll electronically ran into a, a computer glitch back in, I think it was in December, and didn't, wasn't received by our bank. Those who received direct deposit, those funds did not deposit directly into people's bank accounts who signed up for direct payroll deposit. The city worked very hard that day and financed staff and created paper checks for everybody. We got word out to all departments first thing that morning that there was an issue and that paper checks would be available. We had a little paragraph or two blurb that people could bring to their bank to say that it was a transaction transmission error, and if they had any questions, you know, could the, you know, the bank could reach out to verify if someone was in a bind or needed to maybe deposit a paper check as cash versus waiting one day, one business day for a check to clear, that type of stuff. Again, finance department really scrambled, and, I mean, this is the first time this happened in, in my six-and-a-half years here, and it was a real process to. We actually had to delete all the other transactions out of the system in order to reprogram and go ahead in essence and run a paper payroll. Everybody had paper checks before they closed the business that day. Everybody had notice of what was going on. We had one particular employee who had some overdrafts and was looking to grieve that and having the city reimburse for the fact that there were overdrafts by an electronic deposit not going in. I heard the grievance. This particular employee didn't make any effort to let the bank know why it happened or do anything as it happened. We tried to reach out for that employee after the fact, and the person at the bank said, hey, if we had known about this six weeks ago, we probably could have done something this far after the fact. They weren't looking to reverse the charges. It was not a contract issue technically. It was not a contract issue technically, I mean, uh, something I didn't even have to hear as a grievance because a grievance ties to, um, a contract-related issue and this is not in the contract as to when direct deposit shall hit. With our filings with the State Department of Labor, it's very clear with their filings that you have to identify how often a pay period occurs and what day that pay period is. And our pay periods occur weekly and our payday is Friday and we, we hit all those things. So, um, we denied that and I'm not sure.
How much were the fees, did the fees add up?
Um, I think it was requested as a hundred and twenty-something, there were four overdrafts. And then it was, when we inquired at the bank, the bank had said, no, it was only three and they still didn't do it. So it was somewhere around ninety-something or a hundred dollars.
Did this, uh, problem happen citywide?
No, that was the only one that I was made aware of and again.
No, no, I mean, the electronic deposits.
Transmission happened for the entire city payroll.
Entire city.
Entire city, so every hundred and.
What percent of the employees roughly are on direct deposit?
Uh, I think the overwhelming majority are on direct deposit.
I think so.
Yeah. And again, I, I would think, I can't speak for a local bank, but I think a lot, a lot of times, I'm, I'm probably one of the few that doesn't do direct deposit. I don't do ATM, I like to go to the bank and I need to, you know, get a little cash when I make the deposit. So I'm a dinosaur in that respect, but, um, I would think most local banks, I mean, sometimes I go there and they say, do you need this deposited as cash? Because it's a local municipal payroll check and they know it's good versus having to, you know, have it wait for a day. I would think any local bank with a reasonable approach would have said, you know, not a problem, we understand, especially if they could look at a track record of, of checks coming in. This particular employee didn't make that outreach, didn't try anything to rectify the situation immediately, didn't contact us immediately and six weeks later, um, you know, we've run into this.
I have a question, uh, I know we're gonna be discussing the, uh, Lakeport Square earlier, or area later on the agenda, but I noticed today, and, uh, maybe Mr. Anderson can answer this. The subject is not snow plowing, but snow removal. I noticed that the parking, those parking spaces on both sides of the street have not been, and I don't know whether that's normal or why, I just noticed it for the first time today, it's such a tight squeeze in there anyway. And the snow is not removed from those parking spaces, which makes the parking spaces, they were all empty today. There wasn't a single car in any of them when I went by there twice. And one of the reasons is you'd have to have your car sticking out in the, in the roadway to, to be able to park there. So I just wondered what the policy or if they're, because I know downtown you go through with loaders and, and clear the curbs, but apparently that's not happening at Lakeport.
Uh, and I can certainly have Wes come up and speak, I think it depends on a, a more of a, a type of storm, sight line visibility at intersections for knocking down snow and removing it so that drivers have the sight, uh, of line to see. So I think we try to do it in the downtown on a regular basis, I think we do it in some other areas in the city more as an as-needed basis and definitely at intersections for sightlines. I know in sometimes in the past when snow accumulates, we've removed it in the, some of the spaces in the busy corner sections there and stuff, but I, I don't know if you want to add anything more to that, Wes or not?
Part of the problem in, in this case was the timing, uh, because for the most part, if you've seen the trucks, we have slide-in salters now. So to do the, the haul, we have to take all the salters out and then put them back in for another storm. Well, what was not supposed to be a storm starting tonight is now a storm, so we didn't want to pull them out, put them back in to do our snow removal stuff. And typically, we start with the downtown area, that takes two or three days. And then we start with the, uh, the Lakeport Landing area and some other areas where it's real tight that we try to clean up.
So Lakeport Square is on the list.
It is on the list.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Alright, a couple of other things for you this evening. I had sent out an email earlier today on a bill that I'll reference as Senate Bill four oh three. And this brings up a taxation of recreational vehicles issue that, uh, the mayor and Councilor Hamel and I went down to the legislature back in two thousand and fourteen to state our case and we were successful in it. And this, the bill at that time, uh, basically, um, was not going to allow a municipality to tax a recreational vehicle that is in a campground for a period of greater than six months, and that was always the threshold. A recreational vehicle, um, can be something like a park model is up to eight feet six inches wide. So some of these are structures that, yes, they do come in on an axle, towed behind a truck, so therefore they're classified as a recreational vehicle. But when you look at some of the photos like I shared with you all today, um, they are built up with patios and lattice and decks and awnings and screen porches, and these are not vehicles that are typically moved. So a compromise that was reached in two thousand and fourteen that has been in place for four years now was that if a RV had a valid vehicle plate and a motor vehicle registration on it, it could be there longer than six months and it was not taxed as real estate. If it was there for any period less than six months, regardless, then we can come in and drop it on May first and pull it out on October fifteenth. Didn't matter what it was, if it was less than six months, it wasn't taxable nor did it need to have a valid motor vehicle plate on it. If it's there longer than six months and it doesn't have a valid motor vehicle plate on it, then the municipality shall, not may, shall, under D.R.A. regulations, tax it as real estate. So that's been in place for years, the compromise four years ago was either the motor vehicle plate or, or be taxed as real estate. We've gone forward. In addition to taxing the RV, if there are sheds or the decks or anything else, those are taxed as ancillary type of structures. So the original Senate Bill four oh three was introduced this year to repeal the entire section of seventy-two seven colon D, which actually took away the compromise of four years ago, which allowed somebody the option to put a motor vehicle registration on it. So in that case, an owner had a choice, maybe it's less expensive for me to register it as a, as a vehicle. Maybe, you know, I don't want to go through the bother and I'll pay the property tax, but there was an option. The original bill was gonna repeal that whole section, um, which really didn't hurt us. It actually might have generated a little more revenue because now we would be able to tax those RVs that are there for the greater than six months that can no longer qualify for the motor vehicle sticker on it. But the integrity and the spirit of a compromise that was reached with campground owners a few years ago, um, you know, still resonated with me and others. So I went down to not really testify on the bill, but to hear if there was discussion about trying to change it and tweak it and listen. And I left there feeling after the Ways and Means Committee in the Senate that, um, they kind of got it and understood. And Senator Sanborn, who was part of that working group a few years ago, chairs Ways and Means, and I thought we were in an okay situation. I received an email last week that there was an amendment that came out of Ways and Means five zero, uh, as a, as or not to pass that basically prohibited any property, any taxing of an RV as a real estate regardless. And it changed the length of time that an RV can be in a campground from the six months or less to an indeterminable or.
Decades.
Whatever, whatever. And basically it was gonna say you will no longer tax those types of RVs as property. Yet I called Steve Hamilton at Department of Revenue Administration, who oversees the Property Assessment Division, I believe is the title, today to clarify. And I said, so Steve, that means that we are still required, because the law says shall, to go out and tax the deck and tax the awning and tax the sunroom and tax the shed, but you can't go out and tax, under this amendment, you wouldn't be able to go out and tax the lion's share of the value that is there. The reason that I was told that it came out of the Ways and Means is this was double taxation because we already taxed the land at a campground. And the, the land is taxed at a little higher rate than just raw land because it's improved with hookups for electricity, water, sewer, those types of things. So, and that's consistent across the state on it's an improved lot. So they said it's double taxation because we already taxed the land. Under that logic, the land that your house was built on was already taxed as raw land before you built your house. And now you built your house, none of us should be paying taxes on the house, just the land underneath it. So, um, it is highly unlikely, it's going to the full Senate on Thursday, on a five oh recommendation, it's highly likely that anybody is gonna lead the charge to amend this on the, amend this on the fly or kill it in the Senate on Thursday. Not that I won't send some correspondence with your blessing, but, um, I'm not optimistic that'll happen. I think our best efforts are to wait until this guest refers to a House committee. The logical ones are either Ways and Means or probably municipal and county government. And go back down there at that point and, um, after the bill crosses over into the House and get in front of the House committee and really talk about, um, you know, what the damage this does for Laconia.
Pictures are what did the trick last time.
Right, and, and for Laconia, it's between.
We showed the committee the pictures of what is passing for recreational vehicles in Laconia and it was a joke.
Yeah.
At the hearing that you went to, did they mention anything about double taxation, did they raise that issue?
I don't think I want to phrase this. When, when you sign up for speaking at, at the hearings, you do a sign-in sheet.
Yeah.
And I typically like to sign in later in the process, so I have a chance to hear what is said in front of me and be able to incorporate that into my comments if, a response or, or, or some additional comments if need be. Uh, so I did that at this hearing and, um, Senator Sanborn, I believe, thought he was doing me a favor to get me out of there quickly, scanned down the list, recognized my name and called me to testify first, which I was not hoping to do. So I said my testimony and then he called up the representative for the municipal association. So I think the more reasoned comments came earlier. It was a busy day in the Senate and I'm not knocking anybody because senators serve on multiple committees and sometimes they have to bounce in and out of hearings. So there was a lot of in and out and a couple of senators, um, came in about halfway through when some of the more wide-ranging, off-the-subject type of comments, um, came out about taxation without representation and a few other things that were very far off the mark, but they missed some of, I think, the more germane testimony early in the hearing. So, um, they don't, they don't let on after they hear the comment, they go and they execute later on and they came out with an amendment and, um, it, it really boggles my mind. So, uh, I certainly will send something with the council's blessing, but I think our best effort is to see where this gets assigned in the House. For Laconia, it's somewhere probably between four and five million dollars of assessed value that would be shifted to other property taxpayers, I mean, valuation. So that four or five million value at twenty-one per thousand, you know, it's around a hundred thousand dollars in taxes. But the fairness issue comes in, that if someone is truly coming up weekends and weeks in, you know, in our community, they're using our beaches, our roads, our parks, possibly going into the library, maybe need police or ambulance service, you know, that's, you know, they would in essence pay their share of taxes, they, they were renting a condo or a motel room or a cottage somewhere. In this scenario, the, the amendment that came out of Ways and Means basically just exempts a whole class of property.
We know that many of these trailers never move, have never been, haven't been moved in decades. And, and, uh, the, the, the park owners just allow them to, I don't know whether they pay a reduced rent or whatever, but they don't remove them for the winter. The park just shuts down, the trailer to stay in place and along with the deck and the pool and the, the garden and whatever else, you know. So it's, it's, uh, it's pretty ridiculous. They're residents, I mean, there's just, the people have been living there forever, some year-round, a lot of them are seasonal. But, but the, the trailers are trailers in name only.
I, I don't think there's any year-round, the veh, the vehicles, they're year-round, but I think the, most of these parks are not winterized, so they were not year-round residents.
Yeah, yeah, they closed, the parks closed down, there may be one or two that stay open, I'm not sure. But the parks closed down, but the, the, the trailers don't leave.
But D.R.A., I asked him for names of, I asked him if they broke down this, um, type of classification by other communities because, uh, you know, obviously we can get a few other communities to chime in and going down and testify, it strengthens the case. So, uh, Steve Hamilton did give me a couple of names off the top of his head and he did indicate that he would, um, you know, do a little bit of quick research and get me a few more names of communities where this is an impact. And at least the two names, I, I know both of the town administrators in those communities, so I will certainly do my outreach and strongly encourage them to get down and, uh, get down to the legislature at the appropriate time and testify as well. So, um, that's where we are with Senate Bill four oh three, but again, I'm not optimistic that we will get this overturned.
So basically the lobbyists for the RVs have done well in four years to push.
You know, that was interesting, that was the interesting thing, this was sponsored by a senator on the behalf of one constituent. And again, not knocking the senator because, um, there was multiple public hearings going on and committees working that day, but the senator was not there to be able to introduce his legislation to explain what the reason was behind it. And so one of the staff folks came in who just basically read what it said and didn't have any additional background. But then beyond there, Ways and Means amended it in a whole different direction that wasn't the intent in the first place. So, um, it just morphed into something completely crazy.
I'll be happy to go down when it hits a House committee if they're gonna have testimony, I'll be happy to go back and.
You wanna write him a letter? You wanna write the Senate, our Senator?
Our piece again, because those photographs were incredibly.
Absolutely.
I mean, when that, when the members of that committee, when we were there four years ago, looked at those photographs, they were just horrified. You know, this isn't what we were talking about.
Do you need a consensus or a vote?
I'm not hearing any objections, so I, I will, I will do a blanket letter to the senators. But again, I'm, I don't think that's gonna carry a lot of weight, I think waiting till it gets to the House.
H.B.E. thirteen eighty-one, which was the utility taxation, another way that we could potentially lose tax revenue, what's the status on that?
Uh, that has, so we, we sent that out and we got some support from a couple of representatives on that. And again, I was away, so I was kind of trying to read some documents that weren't downloading as quickly because the internet wasn't great and trying to get caught up today. But, um, there was a reasonable amendment, so that has not gone to a final vote yet. For whatever reason, I, it came off the calendar and it was carried forward to somewhere this week. There was a, there was a reasonable amendment to that that is going to utilize the assessing standard board's recommendations for consistent valuation of poles, conduits and that type of stuff, which is, was a, was a compromise. What House Bill thirteen eighty-one did was they took the compromise and they, they made it worse. So depending how things play out, if the amendment comes forward and passes and thirteen eighty-one passes as amended, generally speaking, I think it's a fair and reasonable compromise and doesn't harm us. So it's one of those things that there's a couple of moving parts to right now.
It's a perfect example of a bill when you take, when you're trying to advocate to, uh, a legislator in terms of it's easy to get confused on this one. And so I think, you know, in terms of, um, because any other amendment would probably be something that would hurt us. And so I think voting it down is our best, uh, best position.
Yeah, I mean, there were a couple of moving parts, so it's either vote for the specific amendment by name of the reps who are doing it. And if that doesn't go with it, then it's kill the bill, uh, you know, it's basically, it's that simple. But yours is simpler of just.
I'd just say kill.
Yeah, if you, if you kill it or if they re-refer it to interim study, that's not a bad outcome either.
Yes, it's too, too easy for it to get manipulated again.
I agree, sometimes, like I say, you never know what it might morph into.
Yeah, just kill.
So.
Alright, where are you on your agenda?
I've got a few more for you. You already mentioned the trash delay one day late all week. Um, with my, um, report tonight, um, we had a resignation of a longtime member of the Laconia Housing Authority, Barbara Bobby Thomas was a longtime member and a very active member. Due to some, uh, health reasons, um, she is resigning and her term was slated to run through until October of, of twenty twenty-one. Uh, I am pleased to say that Sonya Masizik, um, has volunteered and would bring some great credentials to serve on that. So, um, with my report tonight, I would let you know that I will be, uh, accepting with regret, or we will be accepting with regret the resignation of Bobby Thomas, but please that Sonya will be, um, joining the housing authority and filling the remainder of that term. I passed out on your desk this evening a document that will look like this. I shared with the council probably a couple of months ago, so some of you were not around, that in this coming budget season, we were going to be have some, uh, separate new, new, new line items regarding some ongoing maintenance and testing and, um, monitoring cost in various cleaning, you know, you know, landfill and burn dump cleanup sites in the city. And that we had a couple of parcels that we were just gonna put out for exploratory RFPs and determine if there was, um, interest in someone doing a, a low or no ground intrusive type of operation because we don't want digging deep foundations into the soil of, of closed landfills. But there are some potential reuses, including slab, storage units, solar, uh, array gardens type of things out there. So we went out to an RFP for about six weeks, we listed two sites. One is the approximate fifty-nine acre site of the Winnebago Gardens, a closed landfill out on eleven B, in the vicinity of the governor, governor's crossing area, so that would be depicted on the top picture on your cover sheet. In a second site we went out to was the recently, um, capped Frank Bean Road site where we purchased those properties, raised structures there and brought in a couple of feet of clean fill. And the Frank Bean site is the bottom picture, that's about a two-acre parcel. So we went out just kind of open-ended and seeking proposals, um, based on a low-intensity in-ground type of use. And we only received one response, I'm just kind of sharing it publicly tonight, that, um, a, a combined party of New England Solar Gardens, Nobis Engineering. Um, a, a combined party of New England Solar Gardens, Nobis Engineering and New England Commercial Solar. Um, has proposed um, doing a solar array on the site, um, combined with the two parcels. Um, the, the first section of their submittal is not numbered, but if you went in about. Six pages and on the backside, if you get to the point of your document where uh, you get something that says E N S G looking at you here, I want you to look at the back page, so it's about six pages in. So if you get to the N E S G with a pretty blue sky on it. We wanna look at the page on the, on the uh, just before, the, the backside page just before, that uh, has an orange bar and it says section three proposal for city of Laconia. Everybody found that page? So again, this is combined for the two parcels um, together, they're talking about there's no expense, they do all the installation, they do all the maintenance, they'll be out there for. Um, you know, once it's installed, there's really not a whole lot of maintenance, there's a couple of seasonal mowings. It's a um, it's a very low impacted land, so the very bottom paragraph below the little uh, spreadsheet. Talks about all the equipments installed on top of the soil, um, specifically designed for installation on top of capped landfills, such that not damaged, so. Uh, they've done a number of these in the state, have worked with D E S and are not intrusive, um, if it, understand the process. Um, and the, in terms of dollars, just for a straight land lease and a payment in lieu of taxes, we'd be looking at the um, the, the two numbers. Not the, not the sixty thousand number, but the thirty six thousand dollar number and the thirteen thousand four forty would be what they've uh, proposed to pay the city on an annual basis. For a twenty year land lease with two five year extensions after that, so basically it could be up to a thirty year land lease. And they're proposing around forty nine thousand four hundred a year for the two parcels. The lion's share of that um, comes from fifty nine acre parcel, as you would assume, there's about forty five thousand dollars of the revenue comes there. It's around four thousand and change that comes out of the Frank Bean Parcel. In terms of what they generate annually for kilowatts, it's in there, it's like four point. Maybe that's not kilowatts, maybe it's megawatts, four point eight megawatts annually for the larger site and it's only point four megawatts for the smaller site annually.
Can you explain the estimated energy savings?
I, I think there's a second thing we can tie into it if we chose to, that deals with some rebates and if we choose to buy the power. Back from them as opposed to just having a straight business relationship and they sell it off into the grid. I'd obviously wanted to get into details with them to see what rate that might be, we don't. Uh, I should say, we do use an independent broker and we go out and buy our electricity on a commodity market and we deal with a broker on that, so. Without getting into specifics yet of knowing what that rate would be, that we'd be buying that power back versus what we're currently paying right now, I don't know.
So this is an option, not a add on.
That's an option, so the firm thing is basically the forty nine thousand four hundred if we did both parcels. Um, I think in talking with some staff, um, to lock up the Frank Bean Site for a period of twenty or thirty years for four thousand dollars a year. There may be some kind of a higher, better use for someone else or possibly even the city with a slab and some storage or who knows what there without going into the ground, so. Uh, just initially, I think it would make sense to uh, start a conversation, I'm not asking for anything tonight, we certainly want to put this out and allow for.
Parcel A is the old capped landfill, right?
Yes, yeah. Um, I think further, if we do decide to continue to explore a relationship there, we'd wanna get um, some kind of schematic of. The height to this and the tree buffer to it, I think you can see a little bit um, on the cover sheet as to what the tree buffer would be. There is a picture or two in here that does show um, a person standing in front of one of these photovoltaic um. Uh, sheets and they don't appear to be that tall, but we certainly wanna get a sense of what it may do to any of butters and visibility and stuff going further before we get too far into it. Um, these, once installed, it's actually a very low impact for the installation, because they come in with relatively small construction type of vehicles and. Um, you know, even smaller than dump trucks in some cases, they're pouring either individual slabs or setting them individually, so it's not a huge. Um, you know, concrete truck that's rolling in there and, and, and being on top of the landfill. Um, there's no noise from these like there are from some uh, wind operations, um, but I think we wanna either indicate that we're interested in exploring. And getting more information on the larger site and then we can get some schematics that show height, tree buffer, how it may look from various views and that type of stuff, but we didn't wanna go. Too much further with them until we presented it, and again, I don't need that direction tonight, knowing that you've just heard about it, but maybe for the next meeting, if we can get some. Direction after you had a chance to review it, again, they've done a, a number of these in New Hampshire. Um, Franklin, Somersworth come to mind, there's a few other ones listed in here as well, so. Happy to answer any questions on this.
Like from this photograph, there's an easement.
We do have some easements, are you talking about the top photo?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what that is, or maybe they need an access road to do it.
Just wondering if it's a snowmobile trail, that's what I was wondering.
I, I. Power line?
Power line.
Power line.
Yeah, but is it used as a snowmobile trail?
It's not an official snowmobile trail, it's not on, it's not, not state recognized.
That one's further to the west, I guess, there's one that goes through that area by the airport.
Right.
And we do have an access easement through the governor, um, governor's crossing development to come in and do the installation, but like I say, once the installation occurs. There's very little activity out there as far as maintenance goes or impact to anybody there and there's no noise impact, so. Um, like I say, I wanted to share that with you tonight and welcome to answer any questions, but. If we can get some feedback on this at the next meeting to at least give us some direction as to whether we wanna continue to explore it on one or both parcels.
Council Hamel has a question.
Uh, well, it's not so much a question, but a comment, uh, I think this is a great idea. Um, it's a piece of land that's been sitting there forever, uh, not used and really not able to be used at all in the future. Uh, and if we can get forty five thousand dollars a year for a solar array there, then uh. It's zero compared to forty five thousand dollars, uh, and that money uh, could be put aside if, if, I think we still have. Uh, contaminants on that Frank Bean property on the other side.
The old, it's a sep- it's a separate landfill with the, with the Moorean, yeah.
It's a separate thing, but that's probably gonna have to be addressed and.
I think, I think the bigger thing right now is we are incurring some additional monitoring costs as we speak right now, and we are gonna break those out into specific line items, because between Frank Bean and this one and some others. You know, they're adding up into the tens and thousands of a, a year and, you know, we wanna be able to identify what those costs are and if this is an opportunity to provide some revenue to.
Exactly, yeah.
Offset those costs.
You know, and, and if we do run into that we have to, you know, clean that other site up, then this money could be.
But what site do we have to clean up?
We have a Moorean Road landfill that's across the road from the Frank Bean Site, that was an actual municipal, no, the burn dump is closed, but across the street, there was a separate. Landfill, that was a municipal landfill.
Yeah, you know, and, and we could do like some of the other things we did, we could leverage this amount of money that we know is coming in to.
Right.
If we have to have a bond or something to help pay for that bond over there, so I, I think this is a good idea, it's a good, good. You know, as long as uh, the state EPA, whatever, as long as they say it's okay to puncture that.
Well, again, I think you saw on the bottom of that sheet, they're not gonna penetrate, so anything they do is on top of the ground, so if you look at the, underneath that, that little spreadsheet, um, they're doing it.
Okay. Hadn't had a chance to read the whole thing.
Yeah, I know, we just got it, so it's um.
Council Littman.
I agree with what Council Hamel said, but is the municipal association have any um, sense of what the market is for those, I mean. Thirty six and fourteen's or whatever it is, forty five thousand combined sounds good, but is there uh. You know, for example, cell towers have uh, certain market values um, that are somewhat in common, I don't know whether, you know.
I, I'm, I'm assuming it's tied, and I'm not an expert on this, I'm a two, I'm assuming it's tied into.
The amount of.
The number of megawatts that are being able to produce by it, so it may deal with um, you know, how wide open the space is, you know, how they're able to angle them to get to the sun, whether there's any tree lines in the place, I mean, so those types of things come into play. I'm actually, as part of um, my municipal managers group this Friday, we are having a speaker come on solos, that could certainly be a question. Um, to ask and I, and I know the city managers and, like I said, I don't know one in Franklin anymore, cause she's in Keene now, but I do know the manager. In Keene and the manager in Somersworth and could certainly uh, pick their brains about what they learned through their processes as well.
You know, if somebody wanted to put a cell tower there, there's plenty of room and they'd put them like in the size of this room right here, and that's all they need. And there is good, a cell tower, you know, if they feel they have poor coverage in an area and this would help them. There's plenty of room to put one in, and they do provide a good income.
Am I correct in assuming there would be an escalator on the annual? I mean, forty thousand now might be nice, but thirty years from now.
Inflationary factor, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna.
Let's. Might not be able to buy a loaf of bread with forty thousand dollars.
Certainly conversations we can have with them going forward, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, again, we didn't wanna go too far down this path without some consensus and, you know, get it out there and then certainly, you know, I think there'll be some butter questions as to what the impact is, but I think uh. From what I understand, it would be a non-existent, but we certainly wanna have the opportunity to have those conversations. Cause it is a fifty plus acre site that we're talking about.
Okay, what else you got?
Oh, I got a couple more for you, I figured light agenda heavy, oh, sorry.
No, well, you'll finish, cause mine is totally different, so go ahead.
Um, late yesterday afternoon, Chief Erickson called me in the role of Laconia Fire Department being the health officer for the city. Uh, he was contacted uh, by the Winnebago River Basin Program and I just literally got this report from uh. Department of Environmental Services tonight at around five o'clock, so there was a discharge of uh, raw sewage tied to the Winnebago River Basin Program. Um, in a pipe that was down in the Maiden Lady Cove Pump Station area off of Scenic Road. Um, so down in the Weers, almost to the Meredith border. Um, it was noticed actually by a representative of our water department who contacted uh, the on-call person at Public Works in the sewer. Who went down uh, and also knew where our, our system was and where the Winnebago River Basin system was. Contacted Winnebago River Basin, they responded, so we had a group response coming into it. Um, there were a couple thousand gallons of sewage that were released. Um, they don't think it was a major blowout, they can base on the estimates and any kind of sinkholes, the, it went into a ravine or a gully in the area. They were able to spread some lime and chlorine bleach on the sewage on the ground. Some did get into the lake, but with the ice cover and stuff, it, it hasn't uh, traveled uh, too far, uh, is there um, feelings on it at this point?
A pipe, pipe failure?
Had a pipe failure, um.
But that, that was on the Winnebago Pike?
Yes, of which we are one of, well, it's the basin program of which we are a member, so it's um, you know, something that D E S oversees as opposed.
It wasn't like a blow off valve or something?
No, it was in the. A forced main leak, um, so it was noticeable, but it wasn't extreme. Um, what that happened there, there was a dual force main within the system there, so they shut down and one was active and one was idle, so they shut down. Uh, the active one and diverted the flow into the idle one at that point, um, contained the area, obviously water department was brought in, our water intake is three and a half miles away, there's plenty of distance and. Frozen conditions and that type of stuff and what didn't even make its way to the lake's edge, um, they, they don't feel it's of a significant nature, but certainly wanted to. Share that with you, that that happened uh, late yesterday afternoon and I just got the report on that tonight.
So who is repairing that?
Will we get a detailed report?
Um.
Detailed report?
Yeah, I mean, this is an initial, um, and I'm sure they'll finalize as they go along as to what they, they think caused it and what maybe the impacts are, but. At this point, from a staff perspective, particularly the water department, they are not um, concerned because of the. Uh, dissolution factor and the distance between our intake and the conditions that are there right now and stuff, so. Um, there are no worries at all from the water end, but wanted to bring it to your attention. Um, who pays for it ultimately, it is paid for probably through a, a maintenance account in the Winnebago River Basin Program, which in essence, we all pay for, because that's a member.
The city's not repairing that, correct?
Well, we'll pay our share.
We're not repairing, but we'll pay our share of the program cost to it and those types of things to it, so yes.
So I'm sure everybody's aware that just, we need some kind of final report.
Yep, I will, that, like I say, this was the preliminary one today and um, they've done the notifications to local community, D E S, EPA and. Uh, those types of things and we'll get a final report as to um, the assessment to it. And the last item, um, this probably comes as no surprise to, to any of you, with some of the challenges that uh, L R G Healthcare is facing. Um, that they have chosen not to continue an ambulance relationship uh, with the city as they have done for a number of years. Um, this does not come as a big surprise to either Chief Erickson or myself, um, we've actually kinda been talking about this for. Um, probably going back to last fall about preparing for this, um. I can recall in, in setting goals and objectives for the chief uh, last December, that this was a priority of start, you know, identifying options, um. So right now, you know, the city does operate, the ambulance is transport, but the hospital is responsible for um, all of the billing aspects of it, so the hospital receives all the revenue. Um, so operationally, probably not a whole lot of change over how we operate right now. Um, as far as running the ambulance, certainly the billing component of it, ambulance replacement in the future component of it. Um, some of the region may be impacted more by this agreement going away, because within the catchment area of the hospital. Sean Riley, who is a city of Laconia employee, is a deputy EMS chief, um, but works uh, basically for the hospital. Um, and is paid for by the hospital and works to support area fire departments and training and recertifications and those types of things. Um, obviously, he reverts, you know, back to us, uh, on us and becomes a straight city of Laconia, so he's certainly able to assist with some of the billing transitions. We also have opportunities now where some of these departments will need to be paying to send their paramedics or E M T As to go get their certification every two years. Um, we'll have an opportunity to be competitive with other recertification courses that are in the state and be able to. Offer those out of, or of our firehouse and, you know, charge an appropriate fee for that, so we're looking at some revenue options. Um, we've gone up preliminarily to um, determine who would be interested in being a collection company for us and what percentage they would collect. Um, we've reached out to some experts locally in the regional ambulance business on the private side to kinda pick their brains a little bit about. Uh, the volume of our calls and what we do and would there be a private ambulance service uh, willing to come in and kinda pick up that slack? Um, the, the quick kinda down and dirty answer was, no, we're a busy, very busy department and also at the same time. Our medics and, and E M Ts are firefighters as well, um, whereas if you brought in a private ambulance company. They're strictly gonna do medical calls, um, and, and nothing else, so. Um, early on, and we're still working through some of the final numbers and it will be included in this budget, um, we feel that um, we can. Make this transition and not have an impact um, on the budget where we're subsidizing through a couple of the areas that I just identified, a better collection. Uh, percentage, a better percentage of the collection fee, if you will, to charge to collect and being able to charge for some services for recertification. Um, in round dollars, we think the, the final value, if you wanted to, to call it, after some. Downsizing of the ambulance agreement over the last year or two of what the hospital was providing to the community, and I'm not minimizing it in, in any way, shape or form. Probably came to around a hundred and twenty five or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars net above what they were spending for covering some of the payroll for. For paramedics and the deputy and ambulance and, and some of the maintenance cost um, there versus what they were collecting in revenue. That's where we think the numbers came out, um, and we've had um, good information from the hospital over the years and tracking what they build and what they collected and. What we've billed them for um, the employees who they covered under our payroll and those types of things, so. Um, that's the, that's the bridge, probably around a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that we are looking to um, cover within a, a different way of. Um, billing and collecting those services and doing a few other things, so I think it's um, it's manageable and we're working through those details and I'll. Be happy to share more information in the coming weeks, once we um. Drill down a little bit deeper in some of our, our projections.
At what meeting are we gonna get a look at your budget proposal?
I was looking to have some general discussion with the council on our next meeting on the twenty sixth, I'll talk a little bit more about the county and. Um, I don't think that's a fully clear answer yet, at this point, we'll have a little bit of information on uh.
Why, why is it not clear?
I, I think there were questions about some revenue, about some votes they took and some revenue. Sources that they either approved and what those numbers were, so I'm not sure, I think at a ballpark number, we know that the impact of an increase in property taxes is around. Eight hundred thousand dollars across the communities and Laconia is roughly.
Twenty.
Um, you know, twenty percent of that. Um, I'm sorry, I, I think that, I think I misspoke the number, I think the impact was one point four million. Of which Laconia is about twenty percent, so I think we're looking.
One point four million increase.
Increase in property taxes, yes, I, I, I don't know where the eight hundred thousand dollars popped into my head, but.
That's supposed to be like eighteen percent or something like that, or?
Yeah, so I think it's around three hundred and fifty thousand, I think, but I think it was about a fourteen percent increase. Um, our current payment to the county was um, was a little over two point five million this year, two, two point five million twenty thousand or something like that, so. Approximately fourteen percent, but we're looking to, I know, I know the county commissioners had some questions about what occurred and what was voted and actually voted.
They were talking about whether it was legally passed. They were talking about whether it was legally passed or not, but-
Yeah, and I also heard there was a question about which revenue projections they adopted when they adopted the budget. So, obviously, if you projected more revenue, you need to lay, raise less in taxes. If you projected less revenue, you need to raise more in taxes. So, I think ballpark, we're looking at our impact from the county to be somewhere around three hundred and forty or three hundred and fifty thousand, and an increase, somewhere in that general range.
Over what our cap would-
No, I think if they were subject to our cap, I think they would come in and, have to come in in the eighty to ninety thousand dollar range depending-
So, we're at about two fifty, something like that.
Somewhere, that, that's the range we're targeting right now in, in trying to finalize that number.
This is a perfect segue for my question. What is the tax cap number looking at like right now? I don't think it's in the financial or operational trends, do you know?
Um, I do know. I think collectively, across all departments, if we hit the twenty million in new value, I think it comes in around a million three, a million four in allowable increased spending for city, school, county, and the state education component.
So, we would get about six, six fifty, something like that.
Yeah, I think we're in the six hundred range, the county being at around the eighty or ninety range, and, and the remainder at the school, maybe just a touch under six, but that's, you know, fi- five fifty to six, I think, is the city projected. The county could have been around eighty or ninety in the school, you know, maybe in the seven, seven fifty type of range, ballpark. So, but we still have one more month.
Council's way overpaid, so we could make most of that up by-
Okay, duly noted.
Probably a lot of people feel that way. Can I use a question?
Counselor Ham.
Going back to the ambulance, I know I brought this up before, but I'd really like to see us consider doing an RFP for the ambulance service. I know we had the, the opinion of, of one person, but I, I'd feel more comfortable if we did that and to see what's out there and what's available and what an offer would be. I don't know what it costs to do one, but it can't be that much.
I mean, a staff time and a little cost, but-
Yeah. To me, it would be worthwhile doing. Maybe no one would want to do it, I don't know.
Are there models in New Hampshire for cities?
Manchester.
That's right, Manchester.
Manchester has AMR, which is a national firm. I, I, if I might, I suspect that in the end, the city may well decide to take it over, but I would agree with Counselor, Counselor Ham, that we should at least ask some of those big companies if they have any interest. And maybe we wouldn't have the hundred and twenty thousand that, that we need to be concerned with if somebody else takes it over. The flip side of that is some of us were here when-
Well, the question I'd be interested in finding out what the answer is from Manchester or wherever, is that clearly if we outsource the medical, we would be way over budget on firefighters.
And I think all of those things need to be weighed. I mean, there is the advantage of those-
There are what, twenty-five percent of our calls are fire calls, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's a very small number. We'd be having a heck of a lot of people, wouldn't be doing much.
But, but when we're busy with fires, it helps to have those-
Yeah.
People available. So, I mean, I think that has to be plugged into the equation, but I think, I think we're obligated to, to at least ask.
We, we can do that, and I think some of it depends, as we've talked about before, the level of risk a community is willing to accept, and we had this discussion a few years ago, and there's no right or wrong answer on that. But I can tell you, there are times that we do operate three ambulances simultaneously, and if you're looking to be able to have that feature with a private company, then that means they should have three dedicated ambulants in the area, and that gets expensive, and where ours are cross-trained. But I'm happy to work with staff and, and put out an RFP and see where things come in.
Anybody object to that?
No, I think that's a good idea.
You know, I, I think it just will give us more information, which Dave likes to, to have and to make a, a proper decision. I mean, if it, nobody wants to do it, then nobody wants to do it.
Well, if we're ever going to do it, now would be the time.
Well, that's why we should look into it, you know? If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
We will work on that.
Little, little time effort and hurt.
And, and it also, I, I mean, I think it's our obligation to make sure we get the best bang for the buck, as it were, but it will give us the argument for keeping it in the city after we've looked at this, if in fact that's what the numbers show.
Yeah. What compromises have to be made in terms of-
Right, right.
Having it all work out financially, you know? How many firefighters we have to do without or whatever, and what would be the effect of that? I mean, I can't imagine, we have forty, whatever, we have forty-something? How many firefighters do we have?
We have forty.
Forty, yeah.
You know, something else, I mean, when, when did they say they weren't going to, whenever, are they going to stop doing the ambulance hospital?
July one. I mean, we, we operate it, but I mean-
I know just from reading reports, and I shouldn't have remembered this before Counselor Cheney reminded me, there have been numerous media reports, primarily in the Union Leader that I'm familiar with over the last year or so, about controversy in Manchester over the ambulance service and what coverage that you brought up. How many ambulances do they have there, and what's the response time and all that kind of stuff, that some of the counselors aren't happy with that, or think the company's not providing the coverage that they need or whatever, I don't know, but we could certainly find all that out.
Yeah, and I, I can certainly look into it. Maybe that AMR has some other neighboring municipalities, so that if calls get heavy here, they shift one from another community to backfill, if you will. I'm not aware of AMR having any contracts in our region, so those would be, you know, questions to ask of, of any, anybody who might be.
So, is, is, getting back to that, is, is the hospital going to carry through June? Do everything through June?
My understanding is June thirtieth will be the point that we end the current agreement in place, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's enough for tonight.
If you have a question, Counselor Ham.
Yeah, just going back to the budget preview, in terms of getting a schedule and trying to plan out our time, typically, we need a few extra meetings just for calendar-wise and commitments to be able to get that mapped out, maybe for next meeting would be.
I can work with the mayor on looking at the calendar, on, on special budget presentation workshop nights and get everybody on the same page.
In terms of our health insurance quote, when do we get that turned up?
Uh, we've got the not to exceed that came in around seven point eight. We usually get the final number right around the end of March first of April. So, that'll be a piece. I'm, you know, not expecting anything, not expecting to go from seven point eight percent to zero, but occasionally, we get a drop of a percentage point, which is not insignificant.
Should be nice.
But it, it depends on, basically, they're looking at additional six months' worth of claims history at that point, and it depends on how our claims are running, because when they give us the not to exceed, they're running for the remainder of this fiscal year, they're running from October all the way out to June thirtieth, and then they're locking in the rates from the following July one to the next June thirtieth. So, as they get a little closer with how this year is going to play out, they're able to hone in a little bit. But again, it will, it will be determined on what our, what our claims has been from October to now.
Good thing I'm not on city insurance. The budget would be gone right there. Okay, anything else? Any other questions or comments for the city manager? All right, we're on to, on new business. We have three, three items under new business tonight that I think could be generally described as housekeeping measures, and we'll start with item number twenty. That's on page twenty-nine of your packet, repurposed funds for fencing improvements. And you want to explain that to us, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, we had put some estimates together, and I, I know Kevin Dunlevy is here, he'd probably give you some more specifics, but we had put some estimates together for the capital improvements program last time around that were not included in my budget in the city council, took some one-time money and out of the non-cap reserve account, I, I believe, it might have been another source, but I believe it was non-cap reserve, and put it towards a couple of items. We went out to bid, so we had thirty-five thousand dollars for the fencing improvements, twenty-five thousand for the basketball court was our estimate. Basketball court came in significantly under, the fencing just came in a few thousand dollars over, so this is basically moving a little bit of the allocation out of the surfacing line item to cover the slide over on the low bid for the fencing.
Any questions before we get to motions? So, we're basically repurposing funds that were already appropriated for this fiscal year here. All right. A motion to be in order to approve moving three thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars from account zero one dash four nine seven dash four seven nine dash zero 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 seven, basketball court resurfacing to account zero one dash four nine seven dash four seven nine dash zero 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 three for Opechik Park fencing improvement. Someone care to make that motion?
No move.
Counselor Balance, there a second? Counselor Hamill seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of that repurposing, please raise a hand. Thank you. Five votes, the affirmative that motion carries. Next up, a motion to be in order to approve moving five thousand and eighty-four dollars from account zero one dash four nine seven dash four seven nine dash zero 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 seven, basketball court resurfacing to account eighty-four dash three zero one dash four seven nine dash zero 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 three for Robbie Mills fence repairs. Counselor Hamill makes that motion. Counselor Haynes seconds that motion. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next one is adopting policy on building permits. That's on page thirty-one of your packet. Counsel, Mr. Myers?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, for those who were on the prior council, you know that there were a number of building permit approvals that were coming forward for council approval on private roads or on class six roads, and by state law, they, if those roads were not accepted, they needed city council or the local legislative body approval to that. And I know there were some concern about where we're getting into the weeds on pretty mundane type of issues, so staff reviewed this to try to come up with a policy on which building permits could be handled as an administrative function, meaning they were pretty straightforward, and which ones that were a little more complicated would still have to come before the council because of impact or additional impervious surface coverage or drainage issues on current roads and those types of things. So, basically, the policy is that, or the recommendation is that for what new construction is, that is for, that we would handle those classified as new construction for projects that increase of properties in permeable area, but are not limited to constructing new buildings, you could tear down, replace existing buildings, inground pools, anything greater than a hundred and fifty feet, a hundred and fifty square feet of, of increase in pervious surface would constitute new construction. A general construction would be for remodeling, baths, kitchens, HVACs, if you were tearing down and building on the same footprint, that would not be considered new. So, we're trying to streamline this and have more of the routine ones being handled by the building department, and any of the ones that are more complex that involve serious issues about the ability for the road to handle additional traffic, if it might be, if you were splitting, say, a single-family home into multiple units, would, which would increase cars potentially and, and vehicle traffic and wear and tear. More coverage means more rain runoff and more drainage issues on some of these roads, which aren't necessarily have drainage systems built in to handle that. Those are the types of things that we would still bring to the council. The council does meet every two weeks, so we don't think that's a significant burden for someone waiting on a building permit, but it would relieve you of some of the opportunity to have to just do some run-of-the-mill things, which you probably don't want to be involved in anyway. So, that's the general gist of it, and Wes, again, is here to be able to speak to that, and he's worked-
So, are you asking us to adopt this tonight?
Yes.
Under proposed motion, it's on page thirty-two, it's just blank, that's what-
Um, staff recommends the approve, you approve the attached policy on doing it, so that would be, I mean, certainly we'll have a discussion about it, and if you want to kick it around and bring it back in two weeks, you can, but this would be that policy. And then additionally, we have identified on page thirty-five, some streets that we're acknowledging that are going to be the challenging streets, that we, we wouldn't or necessarily just issue an administrative one, and these streets there-
Well, these streets would come to the council.
There's about a dozen of them, and the reason why we would bring, so I'm on page thirty-five, so a number of these don't have any drainage built, systems built into them. So, if we were to increase coverage or add new houses, we'd want to be able to take a look at what the impact of that is to drainage systems and the existing roadways and those types of things. So, these would be the few exceptions, whether it's tied into drainage, you can see, or road condition, you know, non-maintained trail, some different things. These would be the, the ones that would not be part of your policy. These would automatically come to the city council with a staff recommendation. Other private and class six-
All right, what's the will of the council? Do you want to take this up tonight, or would you prefer to study it? Counselor Hamill?
So, we might be changing an RSA, correct? I mean, does that require a public hearing?
No, this is already in state law. It gives you the ability to define these as way and handle that. We've, we've consulted with legal counsel to say, is this an appropriate approach under the state law, to have the city handle its issuance and do some administratively and still have some go to the council? And if the council were to reject something, it's my understanding that the applicant would then have the opportunity to appeal that to the ZBA. So, there's a checks and balance in place where the-
So, it's an administrative function that we would be kicked?
You'd be granted the administrative function to take some of this routine stuff off of your plate. You know, if somebody came in to just do a remodel and replace windows, then you did building permit.
All right, is there anybody in the council who'd prefer to table this and put it on the agenda next week as opposed to next meeting, as opposed to doing it tonight?
Can I just ask a question first?
Sure.
Only because I'm, I don't know the process. If, for some reason, staff denies a building permit, do they have the right then to come to the council?
Certainly. Yeah, that would be the first step before the ZBA. And I, and I think staff would look at something, and even if it maybe was covered by the policy, but we thought it was a little bit quirky, we may want to kind of cover our, and bring it to you anyway, just so it was discussed publicly rather than having somebody question.
Anybody object to voting on this tonight? No? All right. A motion to be in order, per staff recommendation, to adopt a new policy on the issuing of building permits as outlined in a memorandum to the council, accepted on this date. Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Haynes makes that motion, second. Counselor Lippman seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting this new policy, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, and that motion carries.
Great, thank you.
All right, we're on to the third item, and that is on page thirty-six, starts on page thirty-six of your packet, and that is to designate the city council as the body responsible for making decisions and taking actions described in RSA seventy-two to colon eighty-three, application for exemption. Mr. Myers?
So, this was the, under RSA seventy-two, I think eighty-one was the provision for the property tax exemption that the council voted on a few weeks back, granting a fifty percent exemption on industrial for a period of up to five years. And this is basically my bad, if I had read far enough into the application process, I would have brought to you that night, who do you want to be the determining body in order to grant approval that an applicant met the criteria? And in the state law, it says it could be the selectmen or the assessors. Not every community has a board of assessors, which means it would be the selectmen, and in this case, the, the term selectmen also is interchangeable with the city council or an alderman. So, the fact that we do have assessors or city council, we've got an option as to which one you'd like to have that stay with, and I think staff recommendation is that it come before the council, at least initially, since it's a new process.
I'd agree with that. Questions or comments?
Agree with that.
I would have one, and that is that, at whatever it's appropriate or available opportunity, I think in terms of trying to clarify for the public what's going on here, we need to make sure that we don't interchange the words "commercial" and "industrial," that this applies only to industrial projects, not commercial projects.
As defined.
And, and is applicable, if I understand it correctly, only in, from a zoning standpoint, only in zones that are zoned industrial.
I don't want to say a hundred percent of that without reviewing my notes on it. I think there could be some potential industrial uses within a commercial-
If it were permitted in that zone, you mean?
Right. It, it could be, you know, light manufacturing or assembling or something, I think, could qualify as an industrial type of use and be in a commercial zone, but it's-
So, just so we know, because other communities are having these same arguments, and right now, as these things come up at town meeting time and whatnot, and there's certainly confusion between those two words, and, and I just want to make it sure that we clarify what we've done here, that it applies only to industrial projects, not to generally-
So, our, our intention would be, once this is adopted tonight, and which way you go with it, that we'll actually create the application form, and that will kind of break- it, that we'll actually create the application form. And that will kind of break down the steps for the applicant, specifically what our definition is of industrial.
Of how we define that.
Use, because we use the definition that was in the statute, and it would identify the fifty percent.
Like, would making T-shirts with prints on them be an industrial use? You know, I mean, that, there's gray area here where.
That's why you're going to get these applications coming before you, and you'll be able to deal with them.
Counselor Lippman?
I'd also like to see us have a sustained communication plan on this, because I think, you know, just because we passed it and adopted this, it's, the idea is to try to create some momentum with it.
Absolutely.
The levitating.
Okay, a motion to be in order to designate the city council as the body responsible for making the decisions and taking actions described in RSA seventy-two colon eighty-three, application for property tax exemption. Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Lippman, is there a second? Counselor Cheney, second's the motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand.
The council comments when it comes up.
You voting aye?
Aye, sorry, sorry.
All right, thank you. Five votes, the affirmative that motion carries. All right, we have one last piece of business tonight under unfinished business, and that is the matter of Lakeport Square reconstruction slash parking. And the first order of business would be to take this off the table so we can discuss it again. So can I have a motion to take this item off the table, please?
So moved.
Counselor Bounce, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those of favor of removing this from the table, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative that motion carries. All right, so we're, and I'm, I'm going to ask the city clerk to make sure that this item, I'm assuming that at the end of this discussion tonight, we're going to put it back on the table. So we just need it in future agendas under unfinished business. All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a presentation tonight from Mr. Anderson, is that correct?
It's all his.
At the last meeting, there was a question in regards to traffic counts, and I provided that to the council earlier last week. I just want to go over a couple things in regards to it. One is, when you look at it, probably the key thing is we did on September seventh, which is a Thursday after Labor Day. So what we're really talking about is that type of traffic, that is our normal workday traffic outside of the summer tourist season. So it's roughly eighty percent of our traffic, period. So all that, and this number was based and was used to modify the traffic signals.
Sorry, say that last sentence again.
This traffic count is what we use to modify the traffic signals at the intersection. So on December fifth, like we were talking the last time, it's running off the results of this traffic count. If you look at it and you go to read it, you can see from it, when they say north, it's from the direction of north in this particular case. And I sent, for the purposes of, to the council, I want to make sure I put it right, I sent you basically the combined cars and vehicle, heavy vehicles. And there was three peak periods. One peak period was in the morning from seven forty-five to eight thirty. The next was a midday peak period that was actually offset from the lunch hour, that was one forty-five to two thirty. And the PM peak period was from four thirty to five fifteen. And if you look at the count on it, you'll see the total volume coming from the north on Union Avenue was going through was two seventy-nine and one twenty-one in the morning peak, and coming from the south on Union Avenue was three ten heading north, and seventeen making the right turn, and one hundred and seventy-three making the left turn onto Elm Street. So the majority of the traffic is going through, approximately half of it, at least in the mid-morning, is going either left onto Elm or right onto Elm, depending upon which direction you're talking about. And.
I'm sorry, say that, half?
About half the traffic.
Is what?
Yeah. If you look at it, so you're coming from the north.
Yeah.
You have two hundred and seventy-nine vehicles that are traveling through.
What, where do you get two seventy-nine? I see two thousand nine.
Total volume for the peak period analysis from five thirty to ten.
I'm talking about the total for the day.
Right, if you're talking total for the day. But again, we're basing it off of when we do our planning, we're based off total volume, but peak period volume, to try to match it, because we're running a time of day and a day of week signal system on it. So your total volume, if you look at it from that standpoint, is four hundred and forty-nine coming south from Union Ave, and it's two hundred, two thousand two hundred and forty-seven making the right turn onto Union.
Where are you?
Excuse me, right turn onto Elm. Be page two.
Yeah.
Okay, you, it's about one, two, three, four, five, six, it's the seven block coming down.
So it's.
Oh, excuse me, I'm one block too far.
Rules are.
Grand total is one.
Block six.
Yes. Grand total is four thousand five hundred and eighty-four, coming from the north, going straight through.
Yes.
Making the right onto Elm is two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine.
Right.
Okay.
Two-thirds are going straight through, one-third is turning.
Correct. But if you look at it from the peak standpoint, which is really what we're timing on it, it's two hundred and seventy-nine coming through, and one hundred and twenty-one making the right turn onto Elm.
At what time?
That's during the morning peak from five thirty to ten, which is actually from seven forty-five to eight thirty. It's the last, it's one, two, the third column, or third row set from the bottom.
So early in the morning, way more people are taking a right than are going straight.
No, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy-nine are going straight.
Okay.
Hundred and twenty-one are going right. If you go to.
During peak time, it's even more people percentage-wise going straight than turning.
Correct. And then, if you, at that same column for the peak time again, on Union Avenue, south going north, basically, you have three hundred and ten going through, and you have a hundred and seventy-three making that left turn going onto Elm Street.
And roughly two to one.
Right.
Although I did notice on page two, that interestingly, if I read this correctly, the percentage of people there, we have a much shorter turn lane going north on Union Avenue, turning onto Elm Street.
Correct.
Very short.
And that's just limitation of the space?
But it's by carrying, that turn, that left turn lane is carrying far fewer cars than the northbound, the southbound traffic is.
Correct.
Onto Elm Street. You've only got a hundred and, oh no, that's a right-hand turn. That means onto Clinton then.
Right. The seventeen is the right turn onto Clinton. The left turn onto Elm is a hundred and seventy-three for the northbound traffic or the, coming from the south like.
As opposed to five thousand coming, going straight through?
I'm talking again during the peak period. If you're talking for the grand total.
I'm talking totals, yeah.
Grand total, you have five thousand four hundred and twelve going straight through from the south. And making the left turn, you have two thousand three hundred and eighty-six.
Okay, so again, it's thirty percent.
Right.
I'm hoping you can kind of pull this together, give us some information as opposed to just data.
Well, the piece, what we're really trying to do is saying, what we did is we timed it based off the counts. So we have a day of, time of day and day of week type system working. So depending upon what time of day is that traffic signal turns. The real physical limitation of being able to pass traffic is beyond the traffic signal, and that is the lanes that are coming northbound, but the turn lane is so short. On the southbound, it's really the physical limitation of what happens when a car wants to make the left into Fratello's or left onto Clinton, because there's only one lane of traffic going through. So it's blocks everything behind it at that point. So we have improved what we can through the traffic signals. Realistically, at this point, the next piece is doing something different physically to do it. And from the last options that we were talking about was realistically, was we have one more change we can make to the signal. We can eliminate the phase that Clinton is on and merge that phase in with Elm Street. So basically, those two signals, or those two legs would operate at the same time. So that, that time that becomes, was dedicated to Clinton, now is short, pulled out of it to make it shorter so the whole cycle coming through is shorter. The only other change you can do is, of course, is change the physical nature of it. And either for the northbound traffic, you make that lane, that's the left turn lane, longer. And for the southbound traffic, heading towards downtown, you've got to do something in regards to what happens when a vehicle turns left. That's basically what we've got to be able to do.
I notice if they, if they're turning left onto Clinton in front of Fratello's.
Correct.
The cars behind it go around.
Yes.
But if it's Kasonke or Fratello's above, then you're stuck.
Right.
But I mean, if it's, if it's the car at the intersection, everybody goes around it.
Yeah. It really depends upon what time of day it happens and how, how far back the traffic's being stacked. Because after it stacks it back far enough, it basically ties up the right turn lane, because it's starting to block, block it at that point.
I've noticed it's working a lot better since you've adjusted those times.
It has.
It's worked a lot better.
We haven't, of course, we haven't had a test yet in the.
Anecdotal information. And that is, that if there's a car making a left onto Clinton Street, that get, or into Fratello's, that gets jammed up, and you're looking at cars down past Irwin Marine. If the cars are making a left, are going north and making a left onto Elm Street, and that gets jammed up, just for a few spaces, you're looking at traffic going back out to, approaching Irving, really, at some, at some point in time, or at least close to Canton.
Yeah, I've seen it that far.
And that's, that's anecdotal, so.
That's when you go down the other street and work your way around Valley.
So what I, what I, what I hear you saying is that we either have to, practically, we either have to, or we should outlaw turning left into Fratello's or Clinton, or do something about the lane changes.
Correct.
Designations that we talked about, or one of the two.
Correct.
We either stop people from turning left into, I assume some people use that shortcut for the post office, too, probably cutting through Fratello's. But, let me ask you one question as a follow-up to what we were talking about last week. Counselor Hamill and I have been talking about this, and this has to do with the, the merge proposal for the tight squeeze there just south of the intersection. Did you, what would be the impediment to having the two southbound lanes continue all the way to Messer Street as opposed to merging back into one?
The issue will become in regards to the left turn as you're heading south into Canton's, Mechanic Street, subway, any of those will have the same effect. You probably won't notice it, would be my estimate, during the non-peak timeframes, because you'll be able to flow. But it will be physically another roadblock that you have, just like when you turn into Fratello's.
Because you wouldn't have a dedicated turn lane.
Right. Because you wouldn't have a turn lane.
And we all would have our own personal experiences with that, because I'm sure we've all driven that stretch of road many, many times. But speaking for myself, I don't recall significant traffic blockages, because people have been using that turn lane in either direction, either northbound or southbound. I mean, I just don't ever remember it, that it causes a problem. And like I said, I travel that road back and forth to work a lot. You know, and there again, we're taking up ten feet or however wide that lane is for something that just doesn't happen that often, it seems to me. Now, is there, other than the possibility of someone trying to turn left into Canton blocking up traffic, is there, is there any other physical limitation from doing that?
We'd have to look to see how far we could go and where the center line would be between the two to see if there's any other limitations.
I suspect, I know we talked at the last meeting about those two parking spaces in front of the barber shop.
Right.
I suspect you can't do it without taking those two parking spaces.
And I would suspect that we probably would have to take the parking spaces in front of the, the green building. I can't remember the number right now. I think it's seven fifty, Union Street.
The residence?
The residence.
Yeah, yeah, that's the Emanuel House, between Robbins and the high-rise.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. There's one house in there, the Emanuel House. I had, I had, for the council's benefit, I had an interesting discussion the day after our last meeting, the two, what's their name?
Allen.
Allen. The Allen Brothers came to see me at the office. They were here that night, and one of them, one of them spoke. They brought a map of the property that they own or control in that area there, and it's a lot. And, and there must be fifteen lots that they, they own on both sides of the street in that area, including on Mechanic Street. And there were some interesting observations out of that conversation. One was that if they had their way, and they're in the residential housing leasing business, if they had their way, they would not have, they would not allow any more residential development or any residential development on Union Avenue. They think it's inappropriate, it's hard to rent, that there shouldn't be housing on Union Avenue in that stretch, is basically there, even though they own housing. And they talked about how difficult it is to rent, because people don't want to live on the busy street and whatnot, and they think that's inappropriate. They also think the on-street parking on both sides of the street there is inappropriate, even though it would hurt them in the short run. But their, their, the primary reason that they have been acquiring all these lots is to tear down the buildings that are on them, some of which haven't come down yet. There are several lots back in there that they own, that still have buildings on them, but their intent is to raise them, old houses mostly, one commercial building, I think. But they really want to see a commercial future for that part of Union Avenue, not a residential future. And their idea is either they themselves would develop it, or someone else would develop it into commercial property. And the reason they've been acquiring so much land, especially along Mechanic Street, is to provide parking. In other words, you know, they, their vision is stores along Union Avenue with the primary parking behind the stores off Mechanic Street, which to me seems like a pretty good plan. But they've thought a lot about this in terms of the future development of that area. It was very interesting conversation.
That is interesting. That is interesting. And it makes sense in some ways.
But they're certainly more heavily invested financially in that stretch of land than probably almost any other, other than Canton, maybe. Anyone else. So, so back to the traffic thing, that's the reason we brought this up tonight. Any more questions or follow-up on that end of it? Counselor Lippman?
It seems to me that a longer-term look at this and seeing if we can maybe partner with some folks in the area in the TIF district down there in terms of trying to.
Well, and I was thinking the same thing, because Counselor Hamill brought it up at the last meeting, that, you know, perhaps we could be looking for some off-street parking that the city could own in that area. And, you know, whether it be the Allen Brothers or someone other owner in that area, it might be worth having some preliminary discussions to see what might or might not be possible, either from a lease or purchase standpoint.
Or somehow do something in the, the TIF, making some investment in the TIF to facilitate the development that they're contemplating, which.
Well, if, I don't mean to interrupt, but.
But.
But, no, are you finished, Henry?
No, I, I am finished, but I think making a long-term decision tonight is not right.
Yeah, I don't think we had any intention of doing that. Mostly to brief us on this study tonight. I assumed, as I set her order, that this probably can go back on the table again.
Well, here's my view. There's, it's certainly, everybody, every view that's been expressed tonight in terms of how we go about developing Union Avenue or encouraging development on Union Avenue, whether it be commercial and how we treat parking spaces and how we move on to the future, is certainly very appropriate for us to consider. The short-term question right now is not what we are going to do definitively in the future. The question is, what are we going to do now to open? The question is, what are we going to do now to open up the possibility of creating a drive-through lane as you're heading south on Union Avenue? And the, the answer to my mind is simple. That's probably one of the solutions that we should explore. We certainly can't ignore it. There are lots of other solutions. I don't think we're going to move that wall. I don't think that's in the future. I don't think acquiring private property is, I won't say it's not realistic, but it's a more difficult proposition in terms of addressing this solution. And so I'm focused on not a short-term solution with no information. Thank you, Councilor Hamel. Not that, but I'm focused on getting the engineering done now. So we'll have it on the shelf a year from now, two years from now, or six months from now, if that's what we decide to do. And it doesn't seem to me that the cost of the additional engineering at this time is prohibitive. It gives us options for the future. It gives us more of a roadmap about what we need. And I think the mayor said it right last time we were here. We've got to do something about Union Avenue and Elm Street. So I know that didn't carry a lot of weight last time. I'm just putting it out there because I think that's the smart thing to do. A little money now, it won't be cost, do you know how much it would cost to do the additional engineering?
It's actually part of it right now. When we did the design spec, science scope of work, was for the improvements to the Elm Street and Union Avenue intersection. That piece of it, we believe is in the $10,000 to $20,000 range for designing that intersection and the improvements that would be south of it. So we would have that designed as part of it. It would just, that design would just stay on the shelf until such time.
If we came back in a year and said, let's do the, the through lane, the right turn lane and the through lane, how much would that engineering, how much would that design cost us at that point in time?
We would, we realistically need to do it at this point. So we have a smooth design coming all the way through to whatever we want to do.
Well, I think, I think what, I mean, the reason we're discussing this now is because the, the reconfiguration, for lack of a better word, of that, the attention of that intersection is part of the highway improvement plan. That's why we're talking about it now.
Right.
And what I hear you saying, which I agree with, is that we don't want any work done now that would close off potential avenues that we might take advantage of three months from now or three years from now.
Correct.
And, and, you know, we wouldn't want you or someone else coming back and saying, well, you should have told us that three years ago, because now we've got to tear it all up and do it all over again.
The design will be based off the guidance that I'm getting today. We're going to go through as if we're having two lanes going southbound. That piece will design. We may not build it. There may be some costs unknown at this point that we'll have because we're going to have to, we'll modify the traffic intersection to a degree. Some of those costs may be, have to be redone at some point in the future. Don't know what that is right now.
But the, the, the design will be on the shelf.
But the design will be on the shelf.
We can use that two months from now, two years from now, maybe not five years from now, but at some point in time.
Correct.
So in my view, the time to do it is now, so.
The time to do the design is now, is what you're saying, not to do.
I'm not voting to do the road.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just voting to do the design. The engineering work that we need to get.
And, and don't assume that the lane, the lane arrangement, the way it works now will be a permanent situation. That's what he's basically saying.
Correct. What, the pieces for the design, we will make the assumption that we have two southbound lanes and the ability to have two southbound lanes past the Elm Street intersection going south. Whether we construct them right away or not is a different story. But we will have it set, we will look at it, you know, so it goes all the way through.
Okay, any other discussion on this topic tonight? Councilor Ham.
West, at the last meeting, you kind of perked my ears about doing Elm Street, I mean, Union Avenue from Fratello's to Stark Street. And you said one of the solutions for this year could be just to resurface it and to take care of that rutted area.
Yes, but that's, I just want to phrase this right. That is a very short-term solution.
Yes.
Because it will just buy us.
A year?
Year, maybe, two.
Okay.
It depends on how much more rutting that we get, and it's basically, we have no compaction anymore.
Yeah, you don't know what's happening underneath there, really. Okay, I understand that. Reason why I'm bringing that up, this up, is I was looking over the, because I didn't make the meeting, but I was looking over the slideshow of the Court Street, where it looks three phases to do that. And it's probably almost two years to get through that.
More.
More, okay. In my mind, what might make more sense, and that's just, just me, is to resurface that side that's going down on Union Avenue and do this in two phases. Because if you do, if you do from Fair Street to the bridge, all right, from Fair Street to here is Moon Craters Road. It's, it's just as bad at this section as it is up the other end. So in my mind, while we're there, it'd make more sense to do from Court and Main to the bridge as one phase, and then do the, the other side once you, because you need to wait till the bridge gets done and finish that other side. But to draw that out.
Phase two would be to go all the way to the Belmont Town Line?
I don't know what phase that is.
Well, phase, phase one right now is basically Kaiser Court area to Fair Street.
Right.
Phase two is from Fair Street to Main. The bridge is a separate phase, of course.
Right.
And then the final phase takes it from basically the link-up point with the bridge heading out to Belmont.
Yeah. So, so we're looking at two to three years on that road. I mean, to me, that's going to cause a lot of disruption. If you did it in, in two phases, it'd probably be more palatable to a lot of people. I don't know, that's just, that's just my opinion. I know that things are already in the works and all that kind of stuff and what you've planned to do, but to me, you ought to get rid of that, do the Court Street to the bridge.
The only thing I will say is, right now, timing-wise, depending upon how we do it, I really don't necessarily want to have Court Street, and it could be a case of we're overlapping in 2019, at the same time, we're taking Union Avenue down on the other side of Main Street for that construction project. That might be a little bit too much for the downtown area. That's part of the reason why we sort of staggered it the way that we did.
So you don't think you could do from Court Street to the bridge, I mean, from, yeah, Court and Main to the bridge in nineteen, in this year?
The, we only pay, we only did the full design from Kaiser to Fair, although we had a 50% design. We'd have to accelerate the design process for the piece going from Fair Street to Main Street, which means probably we wouldn't be able to touch that one until August, September. If we don't have enough time to finish it, we're already into next year, and then we're, we're starting Union Ave as soon as the weather breaks next year.
So, so this year, you're only looking to do from Kaiser to Fair Street?
Correct. Part of its timing in regards to impact.
So what you're saying is you don't want to have construction projects on both sides of Main Street going at the same time?
That's really what I'm trying to prevent.
Okay, and that makes sense.
Anything else on this subject, Councilor, Mr. Myers?
Just going back to, to Lakeport again, the other discussion is, do we want to look to synchronize the Elm Street and Clinton Street lights so that they're working as one? We don't need to have an answer tonight, we could table, but we want to be able to incorporate that, incorporate that into improvements when we get there.
And that's a fairly easy thing to do physically. The hard part is to get the drivers reoriented towards it.
You'd have to put up some yield signs up and things up there.
We, we, right, we'd have to do some things to train the, the drivers on the new system, so.
There's a lot of cars that turn left.
So.
Yeah, right in front of Clinton.
Yeah, they, you know, they turn left, head up, head.
So that's more of a driver orientation. Yes, there's going to be some signal changes. So if we want to do it, we need to set it up as part of the project. But realistically, the hardest part is training the drivers on that piece.
Okay, a motion be in order to put a matter of Lakeport Square traffic and lane assignments back on the table. Anybody care to make that motion?
I will.
Councilor Haynes makes that motion, second by Councilor Hamel. Any discussion about putting this back on the table so it'll stay under unfinished business? All's fair, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries. All right, council comments. Any comments tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Hamel.
Just one thing to finish this agenda properly. Where was it? Number 18 on our agenda was skipped, citizens' comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not that there's a lot here, but.
I guess I looked at the audience and, all right. So we'll do it now. Well, it's too late now because we've already done it. So I'm assuming that neither of you had any comments to make tonight.
Better not. You know what's good for you. There's going to be public outrage tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. I guess I shouldn't assume you're sitting here all night with nothing to say, right? I assumed you were here because of the fencing thing. Okay, any other council comments? Councilor Janine.
Mayor, I've been attending the Lake Shore Redevelopment Planning Commission meetings, which have been hosted over at Risk Frost Shumway. And today, there was a, and I think you all got a copy of the handout that was made by the planning group that will do a strategic plan. I, I don't, I, I, I'm concerned with the pace that it appears to me it's going to move at. Not sure if there's anything we can do about that, but there were a number of items today that, that came up about demographics and traffic counts and a lot of other things, which I think are all important and germane. But one of the, the thing I wanted to mention beyond, I hope all of you get a moment to look at this, was that at some point in the meeting, the planners that have been hired by the commission made the comment, they were meeting with the planning director and the city manager today. And I made the comment, and I hope I haven't said something inappropriately, I made the comment that I thought we needed more than a meeting with the manager and the planner. I think with the master plan being developed at this point in time, there needs to be some close coordination between that commission and our, our planning folks. And that they need to meet with them on a somewhat regular basis to discuss. I mean, this group will only be, they'll be making a report, I believe they said, in May.
The consultants.
The consultants.
Is this the $50,000 folks out of New York? Is that who that is?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is them here, it's Camoyen.
Camoyen, yep. But I, I just wanted to say that I.
May is a pretty quick timetable, it seems to me, given the amount of work they theoretically would be doing.
Yeah, and there's quite, you'll see in here, there's questions about their, what areas they're going to use. One of the notes that I made was, if you look at this, they, they list the counties that they think should be included in the data. And as a result of input from a gal from the state. They, they talked about removing Stratford County, I believe, and adding in Hillsborough in its place. That, that, that made more sense, which, which I happen to agree with. The comment was made that including Claremont, for instance, is like including Lower Slobovia, because.
Yeah, it's like including Cincinnati or something.
So some of those things were brought up today and, and I think resolved favorably. But I just wanted to mention that I think the master plan has to be aggressive about seeing what these people are, are proposing as a strategic plan. It's a long term.
There's a whole section, you've got to go read this, there's a whole section that we devoted to making sure that we were enabling and utilizing and working with the Lakes Region Development folks.
We had talked about at one point having our Laconia appointed as well as people that we directly appointed, which was Chris Shumway, and then we have Representative.
Hurd.
So, Hurd, as well as.
Spanos.
Spanos, Representative Spanos of inviting them to the council, dialogue some too, so.
Well, we have Chris Shumway on that.
Yeah, that was the first one I mentioned.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I think it'd be worthwhile, and I appreciate that you attended on behalf.
Absolutely.
But I do think.
I, I have, you know, two reasons. Obviously, it's part of our city, but also the 911 facility that sits up in the middle of that is a concern to me because we invested millions of dollars in upgrading that place electronically and.
Well, that's been part, that's been taken out of the parcel.
Has, but there are people on the commission who, at least I've gotten the impression, think we can change that if we think that's necessary.
I hadn't heard that. Interesting.
I, I talked to somebody from Admin Services who said, no, we're firm about holding on to that. But in politics, nothing is.
You never know, but that's first I've heard that anybody was thinking about.
Well, and, and, you know, I suppose if you had some specific project in mind that required all of that acreage, then you'd say, well, we want that last 15.
If Amazon said they'd moved to Laconia, we'd give them that property.
That'd be sold in an hour.
Eddie Gondrus.
Yeah, we'd be building a new 911 center.
Put them out on Big Island.
Anyways, I, I just, I, I wanted everyone to get a copy.
We appreciate your going and keeping us posted. That's, that's, that's good. I intend to, of course, I was away when the committee was formed and whatnot, but I, I, I have an intention, intention to reach out to George Wall, the chairman of it and whatnot, and have a discussion with him and, and.
And city staff has been attending. The city manager and others have been there. But I, I think it's good for you and I and others to, to check in.
No, I agree, I agree. But as far as the timing is concerned, I thought when, when this, when this legislation was introduced last year in effect by the President of the Senate, it was his idea. I thought his timetable was really aggressive. I would be amazed if they could keep to that tight a timetable that he had. But he wasn't appointing a commission just to have them wander back in five years and, you know.
No, 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 it, and, and they have that sense, the commission itself has that sense.
He wanted something by this fall, I know, that's.
And, and this planning consultant, as I said, is planning on having a, a report in sometime in May, pushed out perhaps to June, but quickly. It appears to me what they're primarily doing is gave, gathering data to, to allow the commission to start making.
So the primary function that we will have, and certainly Councilor Banz will be involved in this, is, 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 when, when the prison was closed, and I think these two of you were on the council then.
Yeah, we changed the zoning on that.
They, the council immediately, per recommendation, and my recognition is from the planning department, immediately moved to put the most restrictive zoning possible on that.
Yeah.
On that parcel of land. And, and so we'll have to work closely with that committee from a zoning standpoint to say, okay, what kind of zoning changes would you need? If, assuming we would be willing to sign off on whatever their revision is, we would have to change ours. to change our zoning to match...
And, and the reason I wanted these, these folks to talk to the, the manager and, and the planning department now in detail is so we don't end up with them making some recommendation that we then have to work diligently to try and change.
Well, almost anything they would propose would not be allowed now. I mean, we're almost certainly going to have to change the, the zoning for that.
Trying to think what we zoned it as. Was it...
We made it RR1, I think.
RR1, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's a chore.
Yeah.
That's no easy task. That's a, that's a chore in terms of those zoning challenges.
Yeah.
You know? So, I have a question.
We may have to create its own zone for it, for mixed-use kind of thing, you know?
But we need to talk to them, and they need to do more than just pay a courtesy call to our manager and our planning department.
Oh, we should ask, we should ask our representatives to come and give us a briefing.
Well, we better have a conversation with Chris Shumway, because he's our designated rep.
Well, I think it's, it's premature for that. Now, they wouldn't have anything to say. But once they get the, once we get to May-June, then yeah, I think, once they get the report from their consultant, then yes, I agree.
And you just go ahead.
Right now, they wouldn't tell us anything other than the consultant is going to come back to us, yeah.
We took it off, we just took it off the table.
Yeah, we put it back on the table.
Huh?
We put it back on the table.
No, we just took it off. What did we do? Did we take, did we take this Union, Union Avenue, Elm Street off the table?
We just put it back.
Well, we just put it back on the table?
Yeah.
I got to pay more attention to what's going on here. Pay attention.
Well, we didn't want to wake you, so...
You did that an hour ago, Dave.
All right, any other council comments? Okay, we don't have a need for non-public tonight, I don't believe. And so, uh, in lieu of any objection, I will declare the meeting adjourned at 9:11 PM. Thank you.